Good evening, and welcome to the February 17th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council. And I ask the City Secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Tonight, we have with us Boy Scout Troop 770 from the Odd Fellows Lodge here. And when we stand up just now to do the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd last ask the Scouts to stand in place there and lead us into the pledge. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scouts. Thank you for being with us tonight. I see Susan Frye with us tonight, former clerk of courts. That's your scout troop that you work with there. So glad to have you. And I saw Commissioner Alameen come in, I believe. There he is. Commissioner, welcome. Glad to have you here. Good city-county relations going on tonight.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Burke.
I need to say that. Former clerk Frye also works very hard with some of his children in Peatman Public Housing.
She sure does.
And she's also working with students having Bible school up at the Market on Liberty Street. So we appreciate the things you do.
She's working hard in retirement here.
(laughing).
Sergeant in Arms tonight is Lieutenant Todd Hart. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. May we have the first honoreum, please?
Item H1, resolution honoring the 2019 City of Winston-Salem retired employees. Whereas, there are 88 City of Winston-Salem employees who have retired in 2019, and whereas the collective years served by the retired employees totaled 2,229. And whereas, of all the 2019 retirees, Robert Solomon Jr. from the Planning and Development Service Department has served the city the longest with 51 years of service.
Oh, wow.
And whereas, the work of all city employees is valued and appreciated by the mayor, City Council, and the citizens of Winston-Salem. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Winston-Salem City Council approve honoring the aforementioned 2019 City of Winston-Salem retired employees and wish them much success as they embark on new endeavors.
Is there a motion?
A move.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. I'm sure there's no one no, so I'm sure that's unanimous. May I have all the retirees that are here with us tonight? Would you please stand up and let us? Thank Thank you all very much for your service to the citizens of Winston-Salem over your career. It made Winston-Salem a much better place because of your work. Have to call out Robert Solomon with his 51 years. So that's pretty amazing, and his service to our community. So again, thank you for your service, and have a wonderful, enjoyable retirement. You're welcome to stay with us as long as you like to tonight, but I know you're retired, you know how.[274.62][274.62](laughter)
Thank you.
Thank you.[277.62][277.62](applause) Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of two parts. The general consent agenda. It's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There will be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless the council member so requests, at which time the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, the citizens can always get copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings on the city's website, www.cityofws.org, and just click on the "Watch Meetings" online link. I know that Councilmember Cipio would like for items C1 and 11 to be pulled. Are there any other items?
C13.
C13?
Move for approval.
Is there a motion on the balance? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item C1?
Item C1, resolution naming the 14th Street Recreation Center, the Minnie Lee Davis-Harris Recreation Center located in the East Ward, recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Councilmember Cipio.
Yes, I'd like for Mr. Royster.
Mr. Royster.
To present.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council.
Good evening.
Resolution approving naming the 14th Street Recreation Center in honor of Mrs. Minnie Lee Davis-Harris. Whereas, the Recreation and Parks Commission at its February 4th, 2020 meeting received a request from Councilmember Annette Cipio, East Ward, to rename the 14th Street Recreation Center after Mrs. Minnie Lee Davis-Harris. And whereas, Mrs. Minnie Lee Davis-Harris began working for the Winston-Salem Recreation and Parks Department in 1948. Whereas, in 1950, Mrs. Harris became the first African-American female Recreation Center Director in the department. And whereas, she worked at Skyline Recreation Center for 20 years before transferring to the new 14th Street Recreation Center, which was built in 1967. Whereas, she continued to work at the 14th Street until she retired in 1971. Whereas, throughout the years, Mrs. Harris instilled quality values and expectations in the lives of thousands of children and adults she worked with. And whereas, the Recreation and Parks Commission supported the renaming of the 14th Street Recreation Center to the Minnie Lee Davis-Harris Recreation Center. Now, therefore be it resolved by the mayor, Mayor Protem Burke, City Council, and the City of Winston-Salem that the 14th Street Recreation Center be renamed the Minnie Lee Davis-Harris Recreation Center.
Thank you, Mr. Royster. Is there a motion, Councilmember?
Before I make the motion.
Let's get a motion on the floor first.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
In a second. All right, now, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is not always possible in your life to be able to recognize someone who has touched so many lives. I was only a child when I went to Skyline Rec Center. But Ms. Harris had been there, and she loved the children in a very special way. It wasn't a job to her. She was a mother to all of the kids who came to the Recreation Center. She taught them about valuing themselves, about being excellent. She taught them games that went beyond ping pong, tennis, horseshoes. She even taught them chess. She was such a special lady. And I am so happy that at this point, many years after she's served and she's passed on, that we can honor her in this way. Very few people who do just the work from the heart are recognized. And I am so proud to be able to set this in motion. And tonight, we have Ms. Harris's family that's surviving, and I'd like for you to stand.[577.52][577.52](applause) And we also have some community residents whose lives she touched. I'd like for you to stand. Those whose lives she touched, Mr. Pickett, you can stand, thank you. And Jared Haynes. So I thank you so much for allowing this to be possible.
That's a wonderful motion. Does anyone else have a discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Of course, that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. I'm sure there will be a proper unveiling of a sign there in the future, I'm sure. Thank you. Item C11?
Item C11, consideration of items relating to a neighborhood planning pilot project recommended by Finance, Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committees.
Councilmember Cipio.
Can we have the overview of it quickly?
Sure. Absolutely.
Ms. Ford?
Good evening, Mayor joins. Mayor Protem Burke and members of the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item C11 comes at the request of Councilmember Cipio to work with North Carolina A&amp;T State University and also Habitat for Humanity to develop a virtual neighborhood plan for the Dreamland Park neighborhood and also for Skyline Village. There are currently over 300 parcels associated with Dreamland Park, and Skyline Village Columbia Terrace has over 196 parcels of this community. The project will be led by Dr. Tony Graham as the principal investigator for the project, responsible for the overall management and execution of the project. They will be using visualization and emerging technologies and also graduate students to prepare animation videos and also collecting data about the neighborhood. Habitat for Humanity of Forsouth County will be the local lead coordinating neighborhood and community outreach, charrettes, and public information sessions. The scope of work for the neighborhood plan will use immersive visualization technologies, include a planning stage, development stage, and various components about sustainable neighborhood development. They will be focusing on environmental imperatives, economic imperatives, and also the social fabric of the community to design the new neighborhood. This process is estimated to take just over a year to complete, with work beginning in the summer. Funding associated for the project will come from 2018 bond funds, $120,000 is the cost for the project, and it will come from the East Ward Neighborhood Revitalization Bond Funds.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Ford?
I've got a question.
Councilmember Burke.
Do, have we given any history about Dreamland Park? Some people don't know that great history.
We haven't given the history of the park. Councilmember Cipio did hold a meeting with the residents of the neighborhood, but part of the history, I think, would come out by working with the professor as they think about the cultural fabric of that neighborhood and establishing the plans.
Yes, I think that should come out early.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cipio, ready for a motion?
Yes. I move that we accept this.
Motion to approve the resolutions. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Motion second. Would you like to comment, Councilmember Cipio?
Yes, I would like to comment on this one. These two neighborhoods are two of our oldest historic East Winston neighborhoods, and they have not had any attention for many, many years. Dreamland Park is a special neighborhood, but we've also discovered that Columbia Terrace is a neighborhood where all of the streets are named after African-Americans. I played there. I played in both of these neighborhoods, but I didn't even know that. So we have two neighborhoods that have really rich histories that have been lost. And I believe this is such an exciting project to begin the revitalization, not of just the physical footprint of the neighborhoods, but the revitalization of the people in those neighborhoods. And given the plan, I do believe we're going to have two phenomenal new kinds of looks that go into the 21st century for these two neighborhoods.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I want to ask you a question. At one time, Winston-Salem State was talking about moving toward Columbia Terrace. Are they still talking about that?
I'm not sure, Councilmember.
I don't know about that. Yeah, and one time they had it in their plan, and I don't know what happened now. They moved to other side.
Okay. All right, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. Item C13?
Item C13, consideration of items relating to the driver's license restoration program recommended by Finance and Public Safety Committees.
Recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Fellow citizens, I'm very excited about the work that we're doing here in Winston-Salem in the area of local justice reform, whether that's some of our ideas around housing, the SOAR program, the youth bill program, or what we're voting on here today, which is essentially an expansion of the DA's license restoration program and the clerk of courts. So what we'd be doing is expanding that program from a one- or two-day clinic to a full-time program. This allows, this particular item does two things. It allocates $275,000 to hiring three full-time employees, and the DA and the clerk of court's office. The second thing it does is expands the program, and we're naming it the Fisite County Drive Program. We know that many reasons why people are in poverty or people are in need of justice reform is because they can't get to work, because they don't have adequate ways to get to work, they don't have licenses. An example is, we've created a lot of jobs in the Union Cross Business Park, but transit isn't able to get them out yet. So we're looking at ways on how we can readjust transit to do that, to bolster the system. But in the meantime, we've got to find ways to get folks out of their communities and working outside of their communities. So I'm very excited about this program. I think to date, the license restoration program has helped a couple of hundred people to get their license back. I'm happy to say that with the way that we're structuring the program, we believe that it's going to get hundreds of peoples their licenses back, and eventually thousands of people their licenses back. I want to take a moment and thank Assistant City Manager Ford for her work with helping to pull this together, the clerk of court, the DA, the Winston-Salem Foundation. I can think of Michael Banner, Arlie the Patterson, and many other community members who said, this is what we need to be doing to move our people forward. When you think about poverty, when you think about justice reform, many of these programs don't come to mind, but I'm happy to say that we are making a difference. So with that being said, Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of this item.
Second. Is there a second? Discussion? Councilmember Larson?
Just for clarity, I understand this is an 18-month program, so we can look forward, hopefully, to see it expanded in the years to come.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for leading on this.
Councilmember Adams?
As council, thank you again to all the partners involved in making this happen. Again, it just shows what we can do when we all work together for the common good. Whether, again, as Councilmember Taylor said, moving the needle is not enough anymore. We gotta push the needle when it comes to, you know, income inequality, equity, affordable, low-income workforce, housing, driver's license, social justice, you know, substance abuse, mental illness. When we work together, it's amazing what we can get done in this town, particularly when everybody that can put something, invest in the initiative versus, you know, holding on to the dollars that they probably, some of us got enough of it. But it just shows what we can do. And even before Councilmember Taylor took this initiative on, they had worked and others on the previous license program. And I would like to thank the Minister's Conference and those that started the ball rolling into what if. You know, a lot of people sometimes, again, Mayor, members of the council, ideas don't come if you don't have faith and hope and take a chance. And maybe we don't get it right the first time, but we may get it right the second time after we tweak it. And even the second time, Councilmember Taylor, he got his relationships together and the partnerships. And there are going to be some people in this city who are going to be very happy that they're going to have license. Everybody in here knows what a license does for you. It's freedom. It's opportunity and it's choices. The only time it really matters is when you get a little older and nobody don't want you on the road no more, and you gotta give it up. But when you're young and you're viable and you have a family, it's important that that happens. And Councilmember Taylor, again, thank you and all of the partners that are involved in making this move forward. And I look forward to seeing the progress reports over the six months as to how it's vetting out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, I said to the mayor, I guess I need to say something, too. Some years ago, we talked. We talked about people not being able to get to their jobs because the bus lines stopped at a certain place. Also, in some of the meetings, I have said to Councilmember Taylor, thank you for stepping forward to help those who sometimes may be ignored. And also this council for agreeing to support these initiatives that you're coming up with. Also, when I look at what we will be doing, one thing, will we get some type of report on the progress of it? Have you given a time?
We anticipate that this program, Mayor Protem Burke, if I'm in order, Mayor, we anticipate this program will take about two months to sort of get together, and we anticipate in the spring, the early to mid-spring. So we will bring reports to Public Safety periodically to let this council know how the program is moving and what type of adjustments may need to be made, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Best of luck with this program going forward. We'll now go back to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There are two items related to street closings. There's a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Burke from voting on an item, an item regarding a Winston-Salem Foundation grant, an item related to the Venture Winston Grant Program, as well as the public comment period. The street closings are listed for public hearings, and when these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given the opportunity to speak. And if anyone wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the council will consider the item. The public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. And when this public comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for comment, and the period is limited to 30 minutes. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, public hearing on a petition to close an abandoned and unnamed alley off of Indiana Avenue located in the northeast ward. Mr. Winford Muse, recommended by Public Works Committee.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who wants us to be heard on this proposed street closing? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Does it come out of the Public Works Committee? Councilmember Bessie?
I'll be happy to make a motion unless Mayor Protem Burke wishes to do so.
Should like to make a motion?
You understand, don't you?[1310.41][1310.41](laughter) Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I have not heard any complaints, so I move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G2?
Item G2, public hearing on petition to close an abandoned Gibbs Street located off of Robin Hood Road located in the West Ward. Petition of Arden Group LLC, YMLC LLC, and Lena W. Bednor, recommended by Public Works Committee.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. I recognize Councilmember Clark.
I haven't heard no opposition, either that this is a paper road. It doesn't exist except on the map, and I will move for approval.
Motion in second, please. And Councilmember McIntosh, would you?
To clarify with staff, we don't pay any money for these. The developer doesn't pay us any money to close these. This is just our regular way we do business. When we close a street, we just gift it essentially to the adjoining property.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. Councilmember McIntosh, you're correct.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. That is unanimous. Item G3?
Item G3, motion to excuse Mayor Protem Burke from voting on item G4.
I entertain a motion to excuse, thank you. Motion in second to excuse Councilmember Burke. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Burke, of course abstaining. Now, item G4?
Item G4, consideration of items relating to the Winston-Salem Foundation Centennial Grant. Finance Committee forwarded this item with three in favor and one abstaining.
I recognize Councilmember Clark.
I was gonna let Mr. Taylor do it.
Mr. Taylor wants to do this one?
I'm happy to make the motion. So moved.
Thank you. Motion second. Any discussion? Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I think what this item essentially does is it allows the Winston-Salem Foundation to donate about $125,000 to Corey Park to help with some of the pollinization and some of the things that are going there. I think a year or so back, the Carolina Panthers came over and started to work on the progress. So the Winston-Salem Foundation is helping to meet our needs with that, with those resources. If you're not familiar with Corey Park, we spent well over seven or eight million dollars opening it up to the community. It's probably one of the finest jewels in the southeastern portion of the city, and in fact, probably the southeastern portion of the United States. If you haven't visited Corey Park, please make sure you do that. But this item and this money from the Winston-Salem Foundation helps us to continue to move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
I'm just gonna publicly thank the Winston-Salem Foundation for a very generous gift, and they did it in honor of their 100th anniversary.
Very good. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That motion passes. Seven in favor with one abstention. Item G5?
Item G5, consideration of items relating to the Venture Winston Grants Program. Finance Committee forwarded this item with three in favor and one abstaining.
Recognize, Councilmember Clark?
I'll make a motion. If there's a second, I wouldn't make a comment. I'll move approval.
Second. Motion second. Go ahead, Councilmember Clark.
I'll say this has been in the Finance Committees for several months. It's a new innovative entrepreneurial effort on the part of the Winston-Salem Chamber of Commerce. The money being allocated is some money that has already been expensed through the Economic Development Fund, and we're simply reallocating it to it. I want to publicly thank Ms. Adams, who worked with me to come up with a compromise on this, and I look forward to hearing regular results from the chamber on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Burke, and then Councilmember Adams.
Yes, members, the mayor, and the members of the council. In the Finance Committee, I had some concerns. I said, if we're gonna spend this count of money, then we need to be fair. We started years ago with the MWBE. I asked Mr. Evans to tell me at that particular meeting, how many MWBEs we started were fact a long time ago, and how many we have in existence today. Are you ready to, Mayor, I don't know if he's ready to give me that number?
Restorative. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Burke, members of council.
Good evening.
Councilmember Burke, we do not have that information. We looked, and as many of you know, the MWBE program was started in 1983, and we do not have records that take us back that far. The information that we're able to provide you with at this particular time is the number of hub-certified businesses that are currently located within the City of Winston-Salem. We don't have any ability to provide you with that history.
Mayor, members of this council, I stated to the city manager that I felt when we have important matters in all these departments, that when a new person comes in, they don't have the right to throw those records away. Somewhere or another, a city this large ought to have some kind of record on IMWBEs when they started. At one time, they had quite a lot of MWBEs. In fact, they joined the Chamber of Commerce. And when they joined the Chamber of Commerce, they wanted to feel like grown men and women, and they were not treated with respect. So they started the Black Chamber of Commerce. And I don't blame them. I would have stepped away from it, too, knowing that people were treating me less than human. So not only me, but others on this council have worked hard to try to understand and work with diversity. In this city, when you mirror this city, we have so many diverse groups here. And we're gonna have to respect them. Now, those who don't respect us, then it's up to, I'll be leaving soon, but it's up to this council to make sure certain records are kept, because each time that we bring up the MWBE, it gets stronger because we had newly-elected officials who come on, and they know the importance of treating all people fair and right and respectful. So that's a disappointment that we cannot look at the numbers to see what we had and where we are today. We have a lot. That also would help us to understand how that we really support. How do we make them feel? That little committee we had, did they turn them off, or did they motivate them to go on? So, Mr. Evans, it's be up to you to sit down with the city manager, that's under your department, I do believe, and to see how we can save some of those records and then pull back, pull them up. I might have a meeting much with the new head of the Chamber of Commerce by choice, but I would hope that he would bring fairness and truthfulness in how he carries out his duties and responsibility. If someone will not speak about the role of women in the diverse groups we have in this community, they will be ignored. And it's up to this chamber, up to this council not to let it happen. And we aren't going to let it happen. It is so important. It is so important, and I want you to understand, Venture Cafe, I'm not against what is happening, but there are some things need to be said, because if someone will not speak up for women and the diverse people we have in this, it will be ignored. So the comments I made is not reflecting on anybody, it's just my concerns. It needs to be stated and understood.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Councilwoman Adams?
Yes. I'd like to say again, Councilmember Clark and members of the finance committee, members of the council, we spent quite a lot of deliberation over this project, and Mayor and council, if it's appropriate, I'd like Ms. Barnes to come up and give a short presentation of what this is and how it benefits the whole community, and the numbers of this board and where these people come from in the community, so the community to have an idea of what this is that we've been doing. Could you do that? Could you do that, please?
I think Mr. Owens is prepared to make the presentation.
Mr. Owens with the chamber?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll take him, too.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Thank you for having me tonight. Councilwoman Adams, I'd like to thank you for your understanding and work on this project and for the trip to St. Louis to study this, to make sure, as our Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, that diversity is a key part of what we're working on. And as you saw in St. Louis, over 70% of the companies that were started over their nine years were of minority-owned businesses or veterans, so we're excited about this program. So to answer your question, a quick overview of the project, what we're looking at doing here is to create an innovative way that we, as the Chamber of Commerce in partnership with Venture Cafe and other community members, are recruiting the best of the best in the startup community, and those can come from right here in Winston-Salem and Forsyth County, or they can come from anywhere across the world. So our goal is to be able to use these dollars to help run a global competition that would attract the best of the best here to Winston-Salem, with the understanding that they would stay here for one year, be given a grant that wouldn't be from public dollars but from matching private dollars. They would have to move 51% of their employees here and at least one co-founder, so we would be able to work them into our ecosystem across the entirety of our community and make sure that the services are provided for them to succeed and be able to grow jobs and be able to continue to invest right here in Winston-Salem. So this project is more than an idea. It's modeled after a successful program in St. Louis, which some of you have gotten to see firsthand. It's a partnership with Venture Cafe, but the chamber, with the history of being able to accept and report back on public dollars, wants to be a key leader and will be a key leader to make sure those public dollars are used effectively and be reported back, just like the updates that you receive regularly, so that we can prove to the points of this council that we're doing what we're asking and saying that we're gonna do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owens.
I need to say this. I guess from my experience, every time I ride on Linden, Chestnut, Patterson Avenue, where the Bailey Park and the Venture Cafe, when I first came to this city, it was full in that area of black people with small businesses. Then, in cooperation with Wachovia, we put together some information to show how black businesses were down there. We moved all that away. People who have not lived around here, you don't have the sensitivity, and sometimes you don't feel what I feel. And then you look at where you have that condo, it was called Factory 194, is it 94?
64.
64. The black women who work there, I was told, Ms. Velma Hopkins, a lot of people praised, I've recognized her so much, she was a strong grassroots lady. She knew the struggles of women working, coming out, perspiring. I wasn't buying 90 some degrees, they had coats on, so I said, what's wrong with them? The person said, if you lived around here, you'd know what's wrong. They have perspiring so bad, they drench it in, and they have TB and pneumonia in this city, a lot of the blacks. And you looked at them, and it seemed like what we do is for progress, but some of the people who suffered for this progress, they're ignored. And I'm so pleased that Sarah, I mean, excuse me, you deltas, but anyway, I'm so pleased. Yeah, that's right, Mayor, that's all. That you bringing that initiative to have the little stories told that will be big stories for people to read and to appreciate, and then that wasn't good enough. Small businesses moved down on Trade Street, and what did we do? We pushed them out. So when you bring these businesses here, I'm concerned about how many minority, and I'm concerned about how many women, and how diverse it will be, and I would hope that you keep a record, because I won't be coming down, that you will keep a record. So when I ask the question of somebody who sits on this council, say, what happened 15 years ago with this, that you'd be able to pull your records up and show how many we've grown in, because these are our tax dollars, I do believe, that we're investing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Owens, before you take your seat, I just want to thank you for your work on this particular initiative, also Ms. Barnes. I think we agree that we want to attract major, big-box corporations to the city of Winston-Salem, but everybody knows the strength of any city has something to do with the small businesses. They're the backbone of every community. So when it comes to small business, we gotta do two things. We gotta do two things. We gotta attract new businesses, we have to retain existing businesses. So I'm glad that 50%, hopefully, we're gonna be going after new businesses to come to the city. But I speak, everybody's perspective is different. I speak as a native son of the community. There are many others, and I think it is equally as important for us to work on the existing businesses who are in this city. I brought these comments up in finance, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear. I have no problem with this initiative. I think it makes sense, but I just want to make sure that we have a 50-50 split, at the very least, that we're gonna be trying to bring in new businesses to the city of Winston-Salem, but also that the folks who will be in here, in the trenches, blood, sweat, and tears, trying to create these jobs and opportunities, they also have the ability to come to table and be able to get some of this grant funding.
Yes, sir. If I may address that.
Please. Go ahead, Ms. Owens.
Mayor, thank you. Yes, I appreciate all these comments, and what we are really working on is trying to build our community. As you know, with our consolidation with Winston-Salem Business, Inc., becoming Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., part of our main purpose is to better align our growing of our existing companies, growing our diversity of our companies that we have. We launched our Richard N. Davis, our first African-American Chamber Chairman Scholarship process just past year, $40,000 a year grant program to help minority businesses get more involved, Mayor Pro Tem, and change that perception that we had prior to my being here, as well as making sure that we actually have one of your former MWBE staff members on our team at the Chamber of Walter Ferbey. We are committed to this effort. We are gonna be reporting back on our numbers of companies, the employees that they've hired, but we understand that, to your point, growing, keeping the ones that we have and recruiting, it's one big pie. We've got to do all of that. So we plan to work on all those efforts very diligently. We will make sure that minority businesses, as well as local businesses, have extra point scales in their process for their application, and we're committed to that, and I'll be here to stand before you in the future if you're so inclined to support and show those numbers and put it right here, because it is taxpayer dollars, and we have a responsibility to report those, and we'll do so.
Well, based on your comments, if I may, Mayor, I'm certainly inclined to support. I just want to make sure that we articulate the way we feel about local and new businesses, but I think adequately, you've been able to explain that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think Ms. Taylor makes a good point. There's a good example here locally, a company called Flurry, you may have read about it today, they've gotten $5 million of venture capital investment and just recently gotten Department of Defense and U.S. Army, I believe it is, or contracts that they're gonna explode, so it's a good example that happens right here locally. Councilwoman Scipio, had a comment?
Yes, Mr. Owens. I really think this is a good move for our community, but I've always been concerned when people say we're going to get the best of the best, because the criteria for minorities tend to be different than for majorities. So I certainly hope the criteria for selection isn't so high that African-Americans, just by the design of their criteria, are eliminated. And secondly, local people who are ready to move need to know how to access this program. So I really want us to make a big effort to identify local startups that really need to have this push to maximize their prosperity. And then I just want to ask this basic little question. When do you think you're gonna get this started?
First off, Councilwoman, thank you for your input and your comments, and I believe there are gonna be many businesses from right here locally that are the best of the best, and we will be very intentional about creating that criteria to be aware of that as well, to your point. As related to when we can get this started, we have private dollars that are going to be needing to raised as well. That's underway. Our goal originally was to launch and have the first cohort, the first group of companies in this process in the fall. That late fall is probably a stretch goal. I would be a little more realistic to say it'll take a little bit of time to probably be the spring of next year to where they're here in place, up and running. We'll be hiring a full-time position to direct this process. We'll be partnering with Venture Cafe and others, but it will take a little time to get the word out, make sure we're very intentional about how we spread that message, and then go start to recruit, whether it's locally or across the world, to be able to attract these companies. So I would, I'll be a little more conservative and realistic in saying the spring most likely.
Councilwoman Adams, another comment?
Yes. Again, I don't know whether Mr. Owens, you, or Ms. Barnes can talk about the actual board or the advisory group or committee that's going to be working to select the businesses and the importance of the makeup of that, local people, so people will understand that it's not people from the outside. This will be people that live and work right here in Winston. Also, the connectivity that Access, Venture Cafe, and Allen Younger at Forsyth Tech Business Center, those groups have been working together now, at least for two or three years. Access is the latest one that's come on board last summer, I think, or summer before last, and I think it's important for people to know, again, this is a collaboration. This is a partnership of the city, the chamber, Winston Business, Inc., Alliance, everybody. It's a bunch of people that's working to make this happen. And again, with them willing to and being asked that they give us updates, so that because of taxpayers' money, we need to be held accountable to make sure that this thing is working, Councilmember Scipio and Councilmember Taylor, that if we see that based on population, based on businesses applying all data, of course, that somehow people of color, women, veterans, disabled, special needs are not getting in the game, then that's where we have to step in and facilitate or help with the process. So I think it's very important that people know that, as Councilmember Scipio said, it's gonna be imperative that you guys tell the story of how this is going to go, at a level that everybody gets it, so that if it's a small mom-and-pop paint business that came up with something that they think that can take their business to the next level and hire 10 people, we need to make sure that that information is gotten to them and in their hands as well. So I would also be interested in Ms. Rowley, of the communication marketing piece to this initiative as well. I think the council would be interested in that. How do you expect, you don't have to tell us now, but we'd like to see that, as to how you're going to reach out to everybody so they can understand what this can do for them, okay?
May I address, just real quickly, Councilwoman Adams, you asked at the beginning, the way St. Louis does it, they have over 200 local people involved in the selection process. We are planning to mirror that process to be able to have grading of the applications to the point we talked about earlier. So it would be a community effort in terms of the selection of that. It is most definitely a partnership. The reason that we are here answering the questions is we want to free up the people that do what they do best to do what they do best. We're very knowledgeable at reporting the infrastructures in place of our organization to be able to do the reporting, the accounting, the accountability factor, the marketing pieces, so that we can have our best minds in Venture Cafe, the Access Center, Allen Younger, other Winston starts, Flywheel, Center for Private Business, Center for Creative Economy, Winston-Salem State Enterprise Center, I could keep going here, you know them all, to allow them to help us spread that message as a unified, together organization, and we will be providing updates and accountability. We're looking at this from a very detailed contractual language that we have to be able to talk about exactly the accountability factor in our messaging. We will work very closely and continue to work very closely with Assistant City Manager Evan Rowley here to make sure we have that in front of you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, when Dale came, it took Don's flow to work hard to bring it here. Connection, connection. And when we looked at the opportunities for jobs, those people from Dale, they came to Winston, and they wanted to know, who was this Vivian Burke, when they was in Rowley talking? And so when I introduced myself, I said, this is a Vivian Burke, we want you to do right. And so the mayor had appointed me with, what was that, Deborah Conrad?
Yes.
And Gail Anderson, to make sure we would give our thoughts on what we thought. Now, I may not have seen much, but a white female did get nearly a million dollars when she took care of all the, and a black male got close to that, too, when he did the wall. So we're saying we have people right here in Winston-Salem that can do some of these jobs, and that it's up to you and your committees, as the councilwoman said, to look at it real carefully and make sure we get this, since we're using a lot of our tax dollars.
Absolutely.
That's all I wanted.
Thank you. We got a great compromise on the table here. I congratulate Councilmember Clark and Councilwoman Adams for coming up with this, working in the finance committee, will basically get us going for three years, and then we can take a harder look at it and hopefully get funding for the next two years after that. All those who favor the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Owens, Ms. Barnes, thank you. All right. Item G6.
Item G6, public comment period.
This is, again, as I mentioned, we set aside 30 minutes and asked citizens to address the council and myself on matters that are germane to city government. When you come up, if you would, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Karen Winkfield.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Dr. Karen Winkfield. I am a practicing radiation oncologist at Wake Forest Baptist Health, and my address is at One Medical Center Boulevard at the hospital, because that's where I am most of the time. I am very excited to be here this evening and really excited to hear conversations about economic development here in Winston-Salem, because we know that wealth equals health. And I've spent my life as a cancer expert, really working on matters related to healthcare diversity and the importance of making sure that we have healthcare equity, and that's an important thing right here for Winston-Salem. I am one of the Associate Directors of the Cancer Center with a focus on community outreach and engagement, and as part of that job, I am expected to really describe the cancer burden here in Winston-Salem, as well as where patients come from around the region. We have 58 counties of individuals that come to Wake Forest Baptist for cancer care, from Guilford County all the way out to the western part of the state, including West Virginia and Virginia. And so part of my job also is to build strategic partnerships. How do we look at the cancer burden? How do we reduce it? And so part of the challenge is that we know that cancer is the number-one killer, right here in Winston-Salem. It's the number-one killer in the region, and it's the number-one killer in the state. It has surpassed cardiovascular disease as the number-one killer, and half of cancer deaths arise from modifiable risk factors, such as smoking, obesity, and lack of screening. These issues disproportionately impact black, poor, and rural communities, making advocacy an important issue in our state, where here, 80 of our 100 counties are considered rural, where high poverty rates exist without Medicaid expansion, creating barriers for screening for cancers, and where blacks are dying of cancers at a rate of almost two times any other race or ethnic group. At Wake Forest Baptist, we've received funding from the National Cancer Institute to engage minority and rural communities around cancer control in our region, and I have advocated on the national level, both with the Congressional Black Caucus, with the Tri-Caucus, and in my current role on the Government Relations Committee for the American Society of Clinical Oncologists, which is the largest group that actually represents all of the oncologists here in the United States and the patients that we serve. In 2018, Governor Cooper appointed me to the North Carolina Advisory Committee on Cancer Coordination and Control while I serve as co-chair of Coordination and Control while I serve as co-chair of the Prevention Subcommittee with specific emphasis on reducing behavioral risk factors for cancer. My team and I have worked tirelessly here in Winston Salem, and we wanted to come here tonight to extend a hand, to say we'd like to partner, to find ways that we can reduce the burden of cancer right here in Winston Salem, particularly for our African-American populations and those living in poverty. And to that extent...
Doctor, could you summarize your time as of?
Yes, that's it. I am very happy to have that opportunity to share, and I make myself available to the council for whatever way.
We'll take you up on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Elias Berninhoe, I think it is Berninhoe, excuse me if I mispronounced your name.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So my name is Elias Brahnu, and I am new to Winston Salem. So our director is Dr. Karen Winkfield. I currently work as the Community Outreach Coordinator at Wake Forest Baptist Health, the Comprehensive Cancer Center in the Office of Cancer Health Equity. So in my new role, one of the most important things, as Dr. Winkfield stated, is to build partnerships. And in everything that we do at our Office of Cancer Health Equity is, we understand that cancer can affect anyone at any time. So essentially, the approach that we have since February is National Cancer Prevention Month, and March is Cholectal Cancer Awareness Month. So I will actually focus my time on the month of March, which is Cholectal Cancer Awareness Month. It was first declared by President Clinton back in 1999. And at Wake Forest Baptist Health, at the Cancer Center, we're actually holding an event on March 6th, so Friday, March 6th, which is National Dress in Blue Day for Cholectal Cancer Awareness. So myself and our office, as well as the entire hospital, will be participating in this event. We've actually rented from Washington DC from the Cholectal Cancer Awareness, I mean, from the Cholectal Cancer Alliance, the large inflatable colon. So you can't miss it. It's 10 feet tall. It's 10 feet tall. It basically shows you the difference between malignant polyps and normal colon tissue. So in the packet that I will give to the city manager, will include a nice blue ribbon, which since blue is a color for Cholectal Awareness Month, an invitation to our event, which is going to be on Friday, March 6th. It's a four-hour event, so a floating window between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, but the last half hour would concern all of you, because while data and statistics can provide context, storytelling and personal experience sharing can actually evoke emotion and compel action. So we're trying to remove the stigma and the silence of colonoscopies and cancer screening and to get those between the ages of 50 and 75 to their primary care doctor to get their referral, because unfortunately, 140,000 people in the United States are affected by this disease on an annual basis, and we currently have 1.4 million survivors, which is of cholectal cancer, which is about seven times the population of the city, just to give you perspective. So if you're not, for some reason, able to attend the event, we've attached another flyer basically telling you what our office does at the Office of Cancer Health Equity, how we can partner, and everything that we do essentially is based on partnerships. So in the past three months, I've worked with so many different groups, and if you're not able to come, we simply ask that the city council takes a group picture dressed in blue and emails it to us, and we're going to post it on our social media to basically bring awareness to this preventable, treatable, and beatable disease. And it's affected so many, and we truly believe that it can be stopped.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 6th.
Thank you very much.
Philip Summers.
Thank you for having me. I'm Philip Summers of 2422 Peachtree Street in Waltown. I would ask those of you who are here in support of public transportation to stand up. I know there are several of you, if you wouldn't mind just standing up if you're here to support public transportation. I'm not sure they're all get a chance to speak, but I wanted you to see there's a good turnout. Public transportation is an important service here, and it has real implications on community health. Dr. Winkfield is a friend and colleague of mine, and we are very passionate about health equity. And in health, we talk about social structures that enable people to be healthy, help them get to the grocery, to work, to their jobs. So I stood before to talk about the importance of public transit. I think it also is important in attracting talent. You know, sometimes you read the New York Times say, we don't have mass transit, and it's like, well, I think we do, but I think it could be a whole lot better. So my consistent message is, we need to expand public transit. Center for Disease Control says it's high-impact policy for social determinants of health. Good for the environment, good for the local economy, reduce traffic fatalities, people walk more. So I'm sold out, so much so that I drove a city bus for a year. I was able to drive a bus because we had funding from NCDOT. So while Business 40 was closed, we had extra funding. And I'm asking you all to backfill some of that funding, because we were able to have more routes with 30-minute frequency, and that really cuts down on travel times. Most of our buses run every hour. We had some through the Ardmore Corridor that were running every 30 minutes. They were way more advantageous to getting to your destination and reducing your travel time. So we really need to study the issue of public transit. I'm sad that we don't have a public transit planner. I think because we have our system privatized, we keep transit at too much of an arm's length. We really need to think about bringing public transit in-house and investing in it as an asset. So having a transit planner would be a great way. People were criticizing me, Philip, you can't say they're going to take away that money. You don't know that yet. Well, I do know as a driver, they're planning on the April schedules changing and those six routes being gone away. I do know that the people who manage the Transit Authority told me when I was on the way out the door, oh, we'll probably be able to retain people more when there's not so much work to be done. We have got to change that whole narrative to make it an attractive job where they easily can retain drivers, so they're not stressed out putting out fires of just running the routes. Again, I think there's a big problem there, that the problem is privatization. We need to bring this issue closer to ourselves, and we need to see it as a local investment, an investment in our people, so that they can get around and access all the great assets of our community. Thank you.
Michael Banner.
Good evening. Michael Banner, 515 North Jackson Avenue. I just wanted to come and give you your props for passing the drive initiative. I think that was very timely, and of course, it's not complete within itself, but it is a good first step. We've been building. I'm going to give props to Winston Salem Foundation for their efforts and their support. Our group from the Island Community was advantageous enough to work with Winston Salem Foundation, participatory grant, and through that grant process, we were granted some dollars to get a bus. And I was just speaking on that because of the transportation with the previous gentleman just brought up, because I know this is a more comprehensive type of situation than just everyone getting their licenses one by one. So I'm up here asking for support in that effort to share some of that, some of that support, even with these groups outside of the WSTA. We have some other people outside of that who have started their own hubs of driving, but that's not really why I came up here. As you've done this with the 275,000, that will hire three people to go through the licenses situations, that's going to handle like the people who have lost their license due to not paying fees within the last, what, two years? Beyond two years, pardon me. So when it's beyond two years, that is the ones that are most easily remediated. You can most easily eliminate those court fees if we had a petition or court orders that will get the judges to buy in and just eliminate those fees. Pardon me for talking all around the circle. So what I'm saying is, if we add on to this initiative, what you've already started with the 275,000, you know, that might be more useful with those lawyers, since you already got that pegged in. But also, if we have start and impetus to start influencing these judges, which have the power to eliminate these fees, you could do away with upwards of $5 million with only $10,000, if you know what I'm saying, just for paying for their hours and just looking at these old cases on the docket and just doing those en masse, and then still doing the ones inside their two years with the lawyers.
Thank you. Luke Hedrick. Hedrick, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Protem, members of the council, my name is Luke Hedrick. I live at 2430 Queen Street, and I'm here to speak in support of increased frequency of bus service here in Winston. As a medical student at Wake Forest, I'm frequently reminded by our faculty of the importance of social determinants of health. These are the economic and social conditions that shape the health of groups and individuals, among which transportation is one of the most influential. In 2018, the Center for the Study of Economic Mobility located on Winston Salem State University's campus used data from the WSTA Employed Bus Rider Survey to describe the effects of our transit system on economic mobility in our community. 215 riders, all employed and earning on average $20,000, close to the poverty line, were surveyed. These riders spend on average 12 hours a week commuting to and from work. Many of these riders have unfortunately been forced to make difficult decisions economically due to the bus system's routes and schedules. 50% roughly of these employed riders have turned down better jobs from other companies due to inadequacies in the current bus routes. These jobs would have offered these riders roughly $3,800, more in earnings per year on average. One in five of our bus riders have lost a job because of a bus route change, and nearly three out of every four riders has been late to work because of the bus, with more than half facing penalties at work because of this. Beyond these explicitly economic effects, the health and well-being of riders is also impacted. Loading groceries, fresh fruits and vegetables on and off of a bus is easier said than done, and more than one-third of riders said that they ate more fast food and purchased less fresh vegetables because of the bus system. And lastly, it cannot be ignored that one in five bus riders have said that the bus interferes with their ability to receive medical care. Notably, the average time to see a doctor and receive care from one is three times longer on average for those riding the bus than those in a private vehicle. WSTA has continually worked to improve public transit here in Winston Salem, most notably with the addition of second buses on six routes during the Business 40 closure. I would urge you to please continue funding these second buses and to continue, consider rather, increasing the frequency on other routes as well. The investments that we as a community make in public transportation and our built environment fundamentally shape the lives members of our community can lead and are crucial to our shared goal of lifting the physical and economic well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick. Thank you. John France.
John France, 4460 Oak Ridge Drive, 27105. To the mayor, Protem, all the aldermen, and all the officials here at the city of Winston Salem. I was thankful and I was, had a pleasure in serving in the 2018 bonds as we ventured to try to get those passed, and I thank the Lord that we did get it passed, and so we have the money that we are spending on various items. As I'm somewhat semi-retired, I have an opportunity to travel over Winston Salem. I see the good, bad, and ugly. I see the bad roads, the good roads, and, you know, and some of the roads that needs repair. 22nd Street, probably one of the worst streets I've ever traveled on. We do need to do something with the roads that we have in Winston Salem. Also, in my community, I just wanted to address this, as I travel through the city, I notice some of the needs of the community, our neighborhood, some needs that are not being met. In the Carver area, Lansing Drive, Oak Ridge Drive, North Hampton, this neighborhood has grown in the last 28 years I've been there. I moved in there, in that region, about 28 years, and so housing has, and development has been there, has been on the rise. And so we've got two public schools, two private schools, we got daycares, we got senior facilities, we got a library, we have the Facitec, all of these things have come in the area. And I'm somewhat disappointed, one thing that we don't have is, when the property on the corner of Old Walker Town Road and Motor Road, and I looked and did some research on what was going to be developed there, I noticed there's no grocery store that's going to be developing that area, okay? Now, I think I'm on a pet pew, I'm not on a pet pew, because I'm going to Walker Town, and Walker Town is expanding, Walker Town is booming, a little community that's booming, a township, and when we go to get groceries, we all, most of us in that area, go to Walker Town, and everybody knows that. And Walker Town don't pay city taxes, they pay county taxes. I pay city and county taxes, and I've been doing that for over 28 years. And so I believe it's time for us to get some type of grocery store, I'm talking about a chain grocery store in that area.
Thank you, Ms. France.
Please, please think about that.
Thank you very much.
May I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Reverend France, Reverend France, what you need to know is that we've not ignored trying to get a grocery store. The mayor and even the city manager have met with some people with the chain grocery stores to try to get them to put one there. But they said, due to the economics in the area, they don't think they could make money.
Okay. I think we could sustain.
I'm just repeating what they said. You were part of that, talking to them.
Yeah, I got the first two grocery stores to go into the East Winston community. We went up and down the streets with them, showed them the work that was there, and it was very, very successful when we got into there, but came with a high selling per capita, I mean, per square foot of any of the grocery stores. But anyway, we're not having to discuss it tonight, but we will take you very seriously, Reverend.
Take it very seriously, because I think we have an opportunity to put one in that particular area, and I didn't see anything in the plans to establish one.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Reverend France. Brian Blue.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. I'm also here for transportation. I live at 2050 Craig Street. I am a constituent and nothing else, and a full-time bus rider. You got the meek, you got the humble that came up here, but to talk about transportation, now you got the fed up. I've missed buses and had to wait over an hour to get another bus. I know people have lost jobs because they don't have enough bus service, and it just fat, and I don't get it, and I'm sorry that I seem so passionate, but I am passionate. If you can't get to work and pay your rent because of the bus line, who do you get mad at? Can't get mad at yourself? So, oh, some of you might think, oh, go catch the bus a little bit early. Two hours earlier, I'm going to leave out to go to work? No, absolutely not. I'm a server, server, retail people, we work 12-hour shifts, no break. So everything we can get to get, every little minute we have to sit on our behinds before we go run around for people who don't understand what we're going through at home, don't even care. And then I don't understand why, if I can ask the question, who's ridding, rid the city bus within the last year? Any of you? I know you have, and I knew that was the end. Go ride the bus. Go, go ride the bus that you are in control of. Those people are mad down there because of that bus station, because buses don't leave out on time, they don't show up on time. We live in a city that is called a city, and in most prosperous cities, those buses run more than one time an hour. Charlotte, they run every 10 minutes. We're still stuck in 1985 with our bus system, but, but everybody thinks we're just mad and just, but yes, we're mad out there. We're losing our jobs out there. We can't get healthcare because we can't make it to a doctor on time, so people like Wake Forest tell you, oh, you've missed your third appointment, you can't come back to clinic. I've had that happen. And I got kidney disease, stage four. I'm 34, and I'll be on dialysis in less than two years, but I'm missing buses, my friends are missing buses, and I don't understand the little, the common sense things that you don't do with the Winston Salem bus line. One, on major cities... One, on major cities, they have little boxes to tell you two things, a schedule and a route on every single bus stop. I can't even get a bubble to sit down. I got women with their children in their strollers waiting in the street for the bus to come. That's a problem. We got big companies not coming here because our bus system's not working. We're scared to think about a tram system. Let's do better.
Thank you. Anyone else out to be heard? During the public comment period, anyone else? About five minutes left.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I also am here to speak on behalf of the transit riders of Winston-Salem.
Would you state your name, please?
My name is Raymond Mitchell. I live at 2455 North Hook Drive in Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
I speak selfishly because when I leave here, I may catch a bus to go home, I may not, because I live on a route that has two outbound routes in the morning, three outbound routes in the evening, and no other service. But I can get to Haynes Mall once, once an hour if you remove the mitigation routes. As a member of the Transit Riders Advisory Committee with WSTA, I've seen the benefit in the increased ridership on those extended routes. I think if we hold ourselves up to be an up-and-coming city, a great city for people to live and work in, and don't provide public transportation, we're unable to do that. I've had the benefit to live in many cities across the United States, travel extensively in other, in other countries, and have relied upon public transportation to do that. It's difficult for me to get around in my own, in my own city. I have flexibility that other people don't have. I work for myself here in the downtown. I control my hours. But there've been several occasions where I've not gotten to work on the schedule I've defined for myself because buses don't run on a timely basis. And as I said, I can catch a bus at 7:00 or 8:00, and if I don't, I work from home that day because that's the only bus that runs on the route that I, that I live on. I ask and implore that you use good judgment in terms of how we look to manage our transit city, transit for the city. The mitigation routes take passengers from downtown to the south part of our city that head out west towards Haynes Mall area. With anchor stores closing in Haynes Mall, there's a need to make sure that transit riders from other parts of the cities can get out there if we, if we plan to keep the city's economy vibrant. Those people go to the mall to work. They work at the restaurants that serve you food, they help you get your clothing, they serve you at Baptist Hospital and Novak. I'd ask that you give careful consideration about funding the mitigation routes and extending further the routes that we already have. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you very much. We've got time for one more. Mr. Alamein.
Fleming Alamein, 5400 Novak Street, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of the Council. I'm here on behalf of the Country Club Annex Community to thank our beloved Dr. Vivin Burke for years of service responding to our community needs instantly, and I mean instantly, with city staff on occasion. So we gave you flowers the last time. I could not stay for that meeting because it's an obligation, but I'm here to give you your flowers, or you can smell them. I had a teacher at Anderson Senior High School that told me, "Miss Rachel John Campbell, give me my flowers when I can smell them." And so on behalf of all community, thank you, Dr. Burke, and we wish you well, Godspeed. I'm going to make one appeal. I called a friend of mine, Larry Womble, he's suffering from some illnesses. He should sit up on this council. Please give him some consideration at that Quarry Park, to name something over there in his behalf. He's really struggling. He's in and out of the hospital quite a bit now. Thank you for the time, and I apologize for not signing up earlier, but I will have another meeting with the Arts Council. And thank you again, Dr. Burke.
Thank you, Ms. Alamein. Comments very well received, and I think Mr. Rushton left, but there's a proposal moving through to name something for Mr. Womble over there. Well, that ends the 30, 30 minutes for the public comment period, and I'm going to close the public comment period, and then I would recognize Councilman Alamein, and then Councilman Bessie.
Thank you. I just want to say, yesterday, we had a very wonderful program, Black History Month celebration at Galilee Baptist Church. It continues to grow. I appreciate Chief Thompson as well as Chief Mayo for your presentation to me, for my service, and I want to say to both of the chiefs, I've had a positive working relationship with police and fire. It was a struggle in the beginning to be a black female made chairman for public safety. I had to work with those police fellows, but I want to tell you, we had a mayor, Wayne Corpenin, who had such a good relationship with the downtown people. He was a very good man. He worked on the top, was at WACO, and then, but he was also trained in extracultural. The first time we went on the hill together to Washington, mostly everybody knew Wayne Corpenin. He knew how to communicate, and he said, "Mrs. Burke, what I'm going to do, I'm going to bring some of the business people with the committee, and we're going to see what we can do to get the police to act better." They were having problems with relationships, black, white, you know about it. And we did that, and they made certain recommendations. And I want to tell you, when somebody asks me, "Why do I call the police your Blue Angels?" I call them that because I feel good that we have a strong police department, we have a strong fire department, and I thank you. And for you to come down, Commissioner, and make your comments, and the different ones who are extending to me while I know it, I want you to know I appreciate it. Early on, the city manager and the mayor was going to throw a big old party for me October the 14th. I told them, "Back off from it. Let's just wait, yeah, let's just wait a while." So I'm just grateful to God that all of these wonderful citizens in this community, you know how much I love you, northeast, southwest. It's been a wonderful ride, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Burke.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm always happy to see folks coming to our meetings and speaking in favor of supporting, improving our public transit system. I've been on the council since December 2001, and most of that period, I have been working to improve our bus system and expand our transit opportunities in Winston-Salem. And there were years when that was a very lonely slog. Fortunately, it's not anymore. We have other members of council, other members of the community that are supporting, you know, improving our transit system. I can tell you that when we revamped the routes just a few years ago, that there were several members of the council who were deeply involved personally in going out and checking out the routes in their community, you know, Councilman Adams, Councilmember Taylor among them, and ensuring that we paid attention to where the buses were going in their system. One of the things we did, it was a target of that design, is we wanted to make sure that buses were completing their routes in a half-an-hour cycle as opposed to 45 minutes to an hour cycle so that it took you less time once you count the bus to get to your destination. I can tell you that in the area that I've directly represented for years, if you look at the Ardmore area where two of the gentlemen who spoke this evening reside, that there is substantially more bus service running through that area now on a regular basis, more routes and better service than we had just a few years ago. But there is a great deal of room for continued improvement, and we'll need public support and involvement to do that. One of the issues that was brought up this evening was the, the question of maintaining the greater frequency on routes that served areas that might have been reasonably expected to be adversely impacted by the Business 40 closure. There were some misunderstandings circulating just in the past week that the council had already heard and considered that matter and that we were even going to be voting this evening on discontinuing that service. As you can tell, if you were here at the meeting or watching it, that was not the case. I can tell you that the transit staff has not even presented its analysis of the impact of those extended hours on those routes yet. The tentative plan at this point is for that data collection and analysis to be complete in time for us to hear that report at our March Public Works Committee meeting, which will be in about a month. If it's not ready in March, we'll be looking at it in April. But the, the USDOT funding routed through the State Department of Transportation that enables us to expand the frequency on those routes will last through the fiscal year. So we are not under the time pressure to make an immediate decision on go, no-go that some folks may have thought we were. In addition to being Chair of the Public Works Committee on the City Council, I'm also the city's representative on the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation Board, and am very pleased to have the opportunity to chair that board. Just at our meeting this month, we heard a preliminary report from the PART staff about the results of its route expansions that, and frequency increases that it was able to make with the Business 40 mitigation funding. And we found some very interesting patterns. The, the bus service frequency increase from Winston-Salem to Kearnsville got a big jump in ridership, and the staff have already recommended that we find the funds to continue that service. The frequency extension to Surrey County also got a big jump in ridership, and we're looking for ways, in fact, we're begging the State Department of Transportation to consider us eligible for a grant that goes to improving service to rural areas. We're running into a problem because the state has regarded PART as an urban agency, and in fact, we have some key urban counties, but we also serve some very rural counties with dedicated routes. So we're trying to persuade them to consider us eligible for that funding as well. That's still hanging fire, and so we postponed our decision at the PART Board in order to continue to work for that. On the other hand, there was a route that was a great idea, but it got essentially no ridership. It was averaging one rider a day, I think, one rider a trip, excuse me, and that was the, the service to Western Forsyth County. So, you know, it was a great route to have in concept, but had a problem justifying, you know, diverting money from other uses to continue that route, so that's probably going to be discontinued. What we want to see in the Winston-Salem Public Works Committee is which expansions worked and are worth the additional investment and which didn't, and we might be better off looking for money to put into frequency service extension on other routes. So we're going to be looking at that. Everybody who's interested is more than welcome to come and sit in on our Public Works discussion and hear the report firsthand and tell us what you think. Thank you very much.
Councilman Adams?
Yes, just want the public to know that from now until December, in our meetings, I'm going to be doing these public service announcements for the Census 2020. In March, Census cards invitations will start to arrive in your homes, in your mailboxes, and you need to fill it out, you need to do whatever it needs. There's a number on there that's only applicable and unique to your household. You can do by phone, you can do by internet, and you can do by, you know, the three things that we use, hard copy that they'll send you. When we talk about transportation, the money comes from the top. The money comes based off of the Census. Westside County was 25% undercounted 10 years ago. 25% undercounted exponentially over the 10 years that we've, we lost a lot of money. So what I'm asking everybody to do as we go forward every month or every week that we meet, I'm going to talk about the Census 2020. It's coming to your house. Please fill it out, please, because it, it brings so much more to the table than people realize, and so we can all be better for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Your motion to adjourn? Second. Motion, second to adjourn. I'm afraid of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.